Good evening and welcome to the September 26th meeting of the Milton School Committee, as is our tradition. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The only edit that I have for the agenda this evening is removal of executive session at the end. And before we get started, I'd like to introduce our student council member, or student member of the school committee, Guinevere Ferrera. Thank you. Welcome. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us which class you represent?
I represent the class of 2020, so our junior class this year.
Excellent. Welcome aboard. And please, please pipe up if, if and when there's something that you'd like to talk about. Thank you.
Can we move the mics down so she can hear?
There's nobody here for citizens to speak, so we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Pavlicek, I see you're...
Filling in tonight.
Yes.
The first item is the annual report for the, the town's annual report, which you received in the mail. Several people have submitted suggested edits. Charlene has made them. And so really, all that needs, all that's left is a vote to submit it to the town for inclusion in its annual report.
Wonderful. So I'll move approval of the Milton School Committee annual report.
Second.
That's second by white. Any discussion?
I would just like to say it was terrific. And I think we should, it jodged my memory that the high school had come before us to talk about the new classes that they were going to offer. And it talked about those new classes in the report, astronomy class, and a few of the other classes. I thought it might be nice just to hear about, you know, how those classes are going. And it was very thorough, and I thought it really reflected the academic work of the district really nicely, actually. And the whole, the whole thing was nice. Yeah, it was really terrific. Very happy.
Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And just in terms of happenings, superintendent left the list. I do warn our student members, these usually get passed to the student members to talk about what's happening at the school. So be forewarned that next time, this may get shuffled down to you. We do have this Friday approximately 500 students from Japan at the high school as part of our annual visit. So they'll be arriving and be paired with students all day long and visiting classes and so forth as, as part of, as one stop in their trip to this country. This Sunday, Celebrate Milton is at the Pierce Middle School, rain or shine, coming up on September 30th. Next week, we have a school committee meeting on Wednesday. The Glover Open House is on Thursday at 6:30. And the High School 5 through 8 Information Night is also Thursday of next week at 6:30. So those are two events coming up. And just in forward, of course, Monday, the 8th is No School for Columbus Day. And two other upcoming events, which we'll talk about more at the next school committee meeting, on Tuesday, October 16th, it's the Boosters Swing for Sports, the Wallaston Golf Club fundraiser that they have every year. That's Tuesday, October 16th. And at the end of the month, just a reminder, October 28th is Sunday, Sunday, October 28th is the MFE Monster Dash. So those are a couple upcoming events. As I say, later in the month, we'll go into more of the upcoming events, but those are a couple major ones. Ryan Madden, our athletic director, has submitted a little update. He says that Milton High School volleyball is enjoying a great start to their inaugural season. Teacher Jennifer Welles-Rodes is coaching the team. Special thanks to parent volunteers who made it happen with their Play for Pierce event. The girls, high school girls volleyball team is now 6-1 after beating their new Herget Division opponent, Waymouth High. The swim team is 2-0 after defeating Natick and Braintree in their first two meets. There were nine personal bests on Friday. Full recap can be found on the athletics website at miltonwildcats.com. The field hockey team earned their first point last night against Waymouth, tying 2-2. Girls hockey team, sorry, the girls cross-country looks to stay undefeated tonight as they host Brooklyn and Beadham. The boys are at the top of the Herget Division as well, and will look for wins 3 and 4. And at the end of this month, Milton High School, or actually, early in October, Milton High School will be introducing their first ever Student Athletes of the Month. So it'd be a new program of honoring some of our students. So that's a quick recap from our athletic director.
Thank you.
That will handle the happenings.
Thank you very much. So moving on to the chair's report, you have the proposed goals for the 2018-2019 year. These came out of our annual retreat. And if there are no additions or alterations this evening, we'll vote to accept them. But I would open the floor now if people would have changes they would like to make. And while people take a moment to refresh their memories, once again, I'd like to thank everybody for giving up their, their unscheduled time to attend the retreat. Once again, I think it was an excellent exercise in goal building and an evaluation of where we are and the direction that we would like the district to move in. And a very productive exercise again. Yes, Member Rosemary?
Well, I just was pleased, being the chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, it was hard to not go back to try to cross-reference it to see how does this align. And it's very well-aligned with the strategic plan. And, and that feels really good, that, that we're aligning our efforts. When you think that last year's goals were written before the strategic plan was available, and this, these goals are really, so that we're all sort of heading in the same direction. So I think that's terrific.
Thank you. So I'll move acceptance of our 2018-2019 school committee goals.
Second.
It's a second, Craighead. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. School committee schedule. So as you know, we've, we've changed the format of some of our meetings, and we are now conducting some of our meetings at the various schools throughout town. There is a request from one of the, the members of the select board to consider moving our October 17th school committee meeting to perhaps a different date. I discussed the matter with Superintendent Gormly, and I, I'll point out that that is the scheduled date of our Milton High School site visit with all the associated presentations that it would entail. So while I would, while I would like to move our meeting date to accommodate the event, which I hope multiple people throughout the town attend, it may create some scheduling difficulties for the people who are expecting to come on that day. Yes, Member Rosemary?
So, I mean, so that's what, yeah, to your point, I mean, I think that we have, I don't have it in front of me, but I think we have the site council coming. And we also, I think, are doing an invite to, the Boosters possibly come and just educate us about what they've been doing for the season?
Yep.
I mean, if those people could do the 24th, or the 3rd, well, that, next night's Halloween, so they probably don't want to do Halloween, but do the 24th. I don't know. But if not, then I, I'm with you that I, just because we have, those site visits are so tight, you know, throughout the year, I don't know what people think, but...
And, and the other, as you said, the 24th, that would put us in the middle of town meeting week. So we would probably, you know, if we're optimistic, it would be done on Monday.
Yeah, I know, I know. But that's one of the main ideas.
So, so I'm going to suggest that we, we maintain our schedule as is unless there are strong feelings to the contrary. And I would encourage anybody who's watching who has not yet obtained a ticket to the Library Foundation Gala to do so. And those who are unable to attend, if they want to make a donation, I'm sure they can do so through the website. All right. So with that, we'll move on to the finance subcommittee.
Okay. Finance, last met yesterday afternoon, and we went over a number of things. It was a relatively long meeting. The first thing that we did was look at a request to increase the hourly rate of payment for community school staff. And Martha Sandoval, who is the director of community schools, was gracious enough to come and meet with us and talk to us about the reasons for this. There's very clear evidence that she's having difficulty, they are having difficulty, both attracting and maintaining personnel at the rate that we are paying them. We also saw, I think, a couple of, at least a year ago, maybe two years ago, the rates that we were charging for after-school enrichment relative to other towns, and we're on the lower end of that. This would not involve, I would like to tell the viewing public this, the increase that we have supported, that we voted unanimously for in finance will not increase student fees. I also want to make it clear that this is a self-sustaining program, community schools, and it is supported by those fees that are paid for per student, per day, at the current way that it's being charged. So, so we voted for those increases, and we're hopeful that it will make a difference in Ms. Sandoval's ability and her staff's ability to attract and maintain personnel. And those changes are retroactive to September 1st. The next thing that we looked at was the FY19 budget adjustment, which we voted, the bottom line, of course, for the...
This would need to be voted.
Oh, this, this needs to be voted by school committee. I'm sorry. Thanks, Glenn. So we voted for, for, yes, in finance, and I just passed, passed it over. But I'd like to make a motion, I don't have my motion sheet here, that's the problem. I'd like to make a motion to...
Here it is.
To, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve this, the FY19 salary increase for community schools.
Second.
Is that a second by white?
Okay. So all in favor of the increase? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. The next thing that we did was discuss the budget adjustment for FY19. The bottom line stays the same because it's the budget that was approved at town meeting. But certain categories shifted a little bit simply because of new requirements for reporting of various things to DESI. So we just approved that. We don't have to do that for the entire school committee, do we?
Yes.
We do. Okay, great. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, we approved it in finance. I'd like to make a motion to approve the adjustments to the FY19 budget.
Second.
Second, Borella.
All in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
And not to interrupt your, your rhythm here, but...
Yes.
Doctor...
Such as it is, yes.
I don't know if Dr. Pavlicek, for the viewing public, they, they may not understand the, the increased cumbersome nature of the reporting that you're now required to do. So if you could maybe give an example or two for...
The state has decided that they want us to report things in new ways. This is practically an annual event, but this year, their new ways are decidedly more cumbersome than old ways. You'll notice in this breakdown, you know, the school committee votes the salary and non-salary lines and the seven major categories that we're required to report under. You'll notice the technology budget dropping from $650,000 to $217,000, which seems like we're doing something terribly wrong. But in fact, the state, one of the state's new reporting requirements is to take the two or three budget lines that we used to call technology and break them into well over 100 new lines. So that if I buy a computer for a teacher, it has to go in instruction, or for a student. But if we buy it for the superintendent's office, it has to go in policy and administration. And the printer for the computer goes in a different category than the computer does. And if it's, network costs are now in, no longer in technology, but in facilities, because they're part of, they consider network to be part of the facilities maintenance budget now. So it's a, it's a giant reshuffling of our chart of accounts. And so it, it really alters the way we report things. Also, the salary lines in here are based on, you know, our current snapshot of the actual employees rather than an estimate. Last year, when we put the budget together, we took the current employees and assumed everyone would stay and rolled them forward and so forth. And there have been adjustments in our staffing over the summer. And so those are reflected actually here in this budget. And we also use some of that to try to make some adjustments to some of the categories we found problems with. Some of our special ed contracted services were high last year, athletic costs were high last year. And we tried to rearrange the budget some way to, in, in ways that should hopefully mitigate that. So we're not running into those same problems next year. Looking more at some of our expenditures, based on actual expenditures from last year, rather than just projecting, say, oh, it's last year's budget plus X percent for inflation. So it, it was a, it was a fair amount of readjusting.
Thank you. The other thing, one other thing that we did was to approve the budget calendar, which I do have a motion on my motion sheet about, so I know we need to vote on it. Finance voted to approve the budget calendar that you have in your folders. It's four parts. On Tuesday, October 9th, 16th, and 23rd, we will have site councils visit our finance meetings, two site councils per each of those three days in October, and making, make their recommendations and requests to finance. In late October and early November, finance subcommittee will discuss and approve the budget proposal. November 14th, we will present it, our recommendation to school committee. And December 5th, we will vote the fiscal year 20 budget recommendation for the warrant committee. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget calendar for fiscal year 20.
Move second.
Second, white.
Assistant.
Yeah.
Good question. So on the 9th, the 16th, and the 23rd... I, I guess I wanted to ask you guys, are you guys at a standard meeting time now? Are you still kind of...
Yes.
So is it on...
It's on Tuesdays at 4:30.
Except for one of those...
Except once a month, it's at 5:00.
Once a month, it'll be at 5:00.
Okay, but 4:30 or 5:00, okay. All right, okay. And do you meet weekly, or you, or it's, it's...
We're meeting weekly.
You're still meeting weekly?
Yes. And so I'm going to ask that all of those meetings, especially through December 5th, when, or November 14th, when we present it, and all that's, up until that point, at least, that all of finance's meetings are posted as school committee meetings as well, so that other school committee members can show up, voice their concerns, opinions, issues, et cetera. And we're not in danger of having a quorum without a posted school committee.
Okay, great. Okay.
Another question?
Yeah.
Do you know which schools are coming and which day?
We don't know which schools on which days, but the superintendent has assured us that she will have two there at each one. Once we know, that's a great question. Once we know who's there on which day, we will make it, we will share that information with everybody.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next is...
Did we vote on that?
Oh, yes, we have to vote on that. We already made the motion, it was seconded, we had discussion. Would anybody else like to share an opinion, thoughts about it? All right, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We discussed capital requests as well, both for facilities and technology. But we tabled it until after the capital committee meets, and until after we meet again next week on October 2nd, to hear from some of the stakeholders in that. Additionally, we looked at the DESI end-of-year report, which Dr. Pavlicek has sitting between him and myself, and it is so thick, it, it looks like, you know, anyway, I won't make an analogy, but it's very thick, and took quite a lot of time, quite a lot of energy to produce. And I know we need to vote on that tonight, but Dr. Pavlicek, if you'd like to talk about it a little bit, please do.
Annually, every school district has to prepare, this, the agenda says fiscal 19 end-of-year report, that would be a little premature. It's fiscal 18 end-of-year report for DESI, where we have to break down not only everything we spent in the school by a million and a half different categories, but also everything the town spent on our behalf. Insurance costs, the cost of plowing the, the parking lots at the high school, you know, partial, part of the cost of unemployment insurance for the town, all the different indirect costs that add up to a full school budget. And they also have us, you know, break it down in many different ways. You know, for instance, they want to know what percentage, you know, how many of your students who ride the special ed buses are preschool versus elementary school versus middle school, and what are the associated costs. And I have no idea what they do with much of this information, but they make us, make us do it. And so it is due by October 1st annually. I have to say, our budget analyst, Lisa McDonough, is completely responsible for doing this. I have, she can teach the course on how to do these things at the state. You know, she's entirely on top of this. And, you know, the reason you don't have it is this is the almost final draft she and I have to go through and just make sure all the numbers are right. Well, I will scan it and send it to you for some lovely bedtime reading. But the one thing we have to do is, it has to be submitted by October 1st, which is Monday. And so what we're asking tonight is that you authorize the chair of the school committee to sign the certification statement that this is in fact the end-of-year report, so that can be submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by Monday.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to authorize school committee chair Kevin Donahue to sign the...
Certification.
Certification sheet for the DESI end-of fiscal year FY18 report.
Second.
Second.
Second, white.
Discussion. Do you accept this mission, Kevin?
Have no choice.
All right, all in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. And the last two things that I have to do are to make motions to approve vendor warrants, I'm going to do them together. I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number 10 dated September 13th, 2018, in the amount of $578,653.66. And vendor warrant number 12 dated September 27th, 2018, in the amount of $1,023,209.59.
Second. Second by Donahue.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to thank you in advance for all the work that you are, and your subcommittee is about to do over the next few months. It's a very busy season for you. Transportation and traffic, busy season for you.
We've had two meetings. We had one in late August, the week before school started, just because we wanted to get Glover folks in to review the transportation survey that was done. And the vice prin, the assistant principal, Sarah McNeil, attended. And we had a PowerPoint presentation of the survey results. And they are actually at the Glover PTO this evening, doing, doing this presentation to the PTO members. I mean, the goal of safe routes to school is to try to get more participation on the bus, Glover parents, so that they could ease some of the traffic concerns and crowding at the Glover arrival and dismissal time. And then the, they have new signs up at the Tucker. We just were able to, we didn't have them available at the August meeting. They were emailed to the principal at Tucker, and they are up now and running. And Tucker representative said that the signs were helpful and making a difference. But she was also commenting that there are some new stop signs, flashing stop signs over Nees Milton in the Wood Street area that have called, have people thought were very effective in terms of slowing traffic down. And we're wondering whether we might be able to get some of those signs up in the school area. So that was one thing I was going to bring forward at, you know, at our next meeting. Glover School said that it's crowded in the morning, it's crowded at dismissal. Things are going reasonably well. Colicott and Cunningham were wondering whether there could be an afternoon crossing guard added to their, to their day. The morning has two. They'd like to have an additional one in the afternoon if possible. I said I would bring that forward. Lots of the parents were talking about the buses being very crowded, and they were aware that, that we're working on the, the busing issues. They were wondering with the increased enrollment coming up in the elementary, whether we might need more buses going forward. And I said, I brought that up at finance yesterday, and well, I said that that would be a budget discussion issue for the next year's budget. And I have some information to share with those parents that I'm going to send on to them. There is a walk to school, walk to school, bike to school event planned at the Colicott School on October 3rd. And the Tucker and Glover Schools' walk or bike to school is planned for October 10th. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. Member Borella.
So I have a question, since it's, we're talking about transportation and traffic on that. So I don't know, Glenn, if you can speak to it, or, you know, Elaine is chair of finance, because it kind of floats into that. But, you know, I was at that meeting too. And with the overcrowding on the buses, and I know that we're working to resolve the issue, but I just want to put out there that I'm concerned about the, the cost situation and not having enough buses. And I am wondering if, you know, if in the budget, we, we have to do a bigger ask for this, because it's, it seems to be, you know, it can, it was, we had it last year, and we're having it this year. Again, it's all about enrollment. But are you guys planning on a larger ask, like to cover, you know, the transportation concerns that are coming up because of enrollment and size?
At this point, I could say it's on our radar, and we just have to look at the numbers, honestly. Because every bus that we put out on the street, even after the per-student payment costs us between...
student payment costs us between, costs us after that, between $50,000 and $60,000 per bus. So it's a lot of money just for one bus, even one bus more. And with the issues that we're, that we're seeing, to accommodate everyone, it would take more than one bu, not that we have more than one bus, this is worth of students really that need it exactly, but it would take more than one bus to accommodate those students because they're not all located in one place.
But are we saying then that even if everybody who wants to pay for the bus service and everyone who applies on time for the bus service, just say for next year, are we not going to be able to meet that need?
That's a question that Dr. Pavlicek could probably better answer than I am, I can, because he spent so much time on it.
All right, so then, throwing it out there.
Recall that the way the buses work is the first run in the morning is, the first run is the Middle and High School, and then the Cunningham and Collicott and Glover and Tucker. And basically, we are still, by our policy, required to transport any student in grades K through six who live more than two miles away from their school. What that in reality means is that the Cunningham-Collicott buses drive the system because they have the largest number of riders, in terms of buses, riders that we have to support, right? In the middle school and high school, we only have to support sixth graders by our policy. School committee policy does not guarantee that everyone who wants a bus gets one. So we can run 10 buses, we can cover the Cunningham-Collicott. We have a couple overcrowded buses in the Cunningham-Collicott route, and what it amounts to is we've got to basically move one stop off a bus that has, one too many stops onto a bus that has more capacity. So we're looking at how to do that right now. We have the capacity to handle all the Cunningham-Collicott students and all the Glover-Tucker students who want to ride. The issue has been at the middle school and high school, where because the students are larger, you can't fit as many on a bus. And so the policy has always been, we sell the remaining seats of the sixth graders for whom we're required to, to transport on a first-come, first-served basis. This year, everyone who signed up by June 30th, which was the date we asked them to sign up for, got on a bus, but some people who signed up in the summer, the buses were full at that point, and we ended up with a number of people who are not riding at the moment. We have been polling the drivers again because, as we all know, not everyone who takes a bus pass rides every day, especially at the Middle and High School. A lot of things going on in the afternoons, and it's sometimes hard for Middle and High School students to get up early enough to make the bus, and so not always in the morning either. So we actually have been doing a study for the last few days of actual ridership on those buses, so that we may be able to add a few more students to some of those buses, particularly in East Milton where we have a problem. Will we be able to get everyone, everyone on them? I don't think so. So the issue becomes one of, do we look, look at our policy? I mean, if we want to say that everyone who wants to ride a bus, we will get a bus for, then we need to add money to the bus budget. Because we will not be able to do that with 10 buses. Will there come a point with added enrollment at the elementary school that we actually need 11 buses to handle the elementary school? It's possible. We have to look at that. Right now, it's, it's a, we can handle more students at the elementary school, but we would have to manipulate the bus routes a little bit so that some of the less crowded buses would grab an extra stop somewhere. For instance, you know, we have several stops along Pleasant Street on the way to Cunningham, Collicott, and so forth. They could be picked up by several different buses. So just have a different bus stop at that point and pick some students up could happen. We're running into trouble in some of the areas of town where we have fewer buses, where we only have one or maybe two buses, and pulling a stop off one bus, putting it on another is slightly more problematic. That's, the one bus currently we have at Cunningham-Collicott that is actually three students overcrowded is because of that, when we're trying to figure out a way to get one stop moved off that and down to the only other bus that is in that neighborhood. So, you know, it's a philosophical question. I mean, at the moment, to conform to school committee policy, we don't need another bus, but that will not guarantee that everyone who wants a bus in the Middle and High School will get one. If we want to change the policy and say that everyone who wants a bus in the Middle and High School will get one, then we will need to add, add another bus. And so it's, and as I say, just as was pointed out, people think the bus fees pay for the bus. They don't. You know, even if a high school bus of 46 children, young adults, all pay, that's only $12,000, $13,000 on our current bus fee, and the bus is $68,000. And we won't be adding any elementary students because we can handle them currently. There aren't any elementary students out there waiting to give us a bus fee for that 11th bus if we choose to add one. So it is a, it is a $55,000-ish cost to add another bus, net cost. And we have to decide if that's what we want to do or not. It comes down to priorities in the fiscal '20 budget. And so it is something that has to be looked at at finance, but it's, it is, it's, you know, a balancing act with everything else.
Member Ella, and then I have a few comments.
Okay. So I would like to make a recommendation though, too, and I mean, I know that we have, now we have a director of transportation in that position, that I think, you know how I am, it's all about transparency. I, I think that maybe this is something we should bring up policy to revisit and analyze and look at, number one, like, but, but what the current policy is, I think that it would be, it would be advantageous for us to have that up there, that, you know, people can click on transportation, because I think it's, like I've always said, it's confusing now. I think a lot of people have told me that if they can pay for it, then they'll be able to get on it, and they don't understand that, you know, it doesn't, even though you'll pay for it, doesn't mean you can get it. And I know some people were not on time, but I, but if, if we can afford it in the budget, like for next year, I think it needs to be known that, you know, what our priority, what our policy and our priority are, of who we have to fill up to sixth grade, or first just the radius of how far you live, and then, then through sixth grade, then seven, eight, nine, or, you know, whatever. But I think that needs to be clearer if they can pull something like that, so that it's really, it's there, and people can't say, I didn't know, I wouldn't have done this, I would have made different, you know, arrangements for my school year, blah, 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 because I think that, again, it's just, I don't know, I guess my other question is, is this year, that waitlist on that middle to high, is it larger this year than it has been in the recent past? Of people not having the room there?
I'm not sure because I didn't do it in the past.
Yeah.
I know there has been a waitlist for a number of years, going back to when Pam Dorsey was the transportation director several years ago. She would cut it off at, you know, at the, at some point during the summer and say then, everyone else is on a waitlist, and we're not talking to you until October 15th, when we know the ridership.
Yeah.
So there were different policies at different times. I don't know whether that waitlist was as large as the 40-ish students that we have now, but it did exist. I just don't know the, its scope.
So, and just to build off what you said a second ago, I want to make the point that those are, those are administrative policies, they're not school committee policies, that the school committee policy has been fixed for the past several years, correct?
Yeah, the K to six, two miles is a school committee policy.
I just don't want people to hear that half quote. So I think would be, if you are going to look at it, I think it would be interesting to look at what, what it would cost if you changed the fee for the buses to pay for entirely another bus. I think it would be dramatic, but we would worth, it'd be worth having that number.
$1,500.
There you go.
Per student?
Per student, per year.
Wow.
And the, the cost of, if we were to decide as a priority that it was a cost that we were willing to subsume, $55,000 is approximately the cost of an educator, of an FTE. So, so that should also factor into that conversation. And my, my last question is, I know we're in the middle of a, of a contract with our supplier. Does that contract, is it, is it, are we locked in for 10 buses, or is there adjustability there with our supplier? Is this a moot issue?
We bid 10 buses, but we also have a factor in there for what additional buses would cost, and that's the number I'm using. So they, if we ask for an 11th bus, they will supply us an 11th bus, or however many.
Okay. Interesting.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So I think that, I'm just, you know, speculating at this point, that I do think that we will eventually start to see changes at the middle school in terms of the enrollment piece. I do think we need to be more clear that it's not a matter of that you signed up too late. That shouldn't be the answer that we're giving parents. If the policy is first-come, first-served after we give off the remaining seats, then it's not that you signed up too late, it's that you signed up after our first-come, first-served policy had been, come into play, right? Because then parents are saying to us, but, so then what does that mean? Like, if I had signed up on time, then next year you're going to guarantee me the bus? Well, that's not necessarily the case. So we need to be clear about that then, because that's not clear to parents. Like, they're thinking, oh, if I just had signed up on time, then I'm going to get a bus next year in the sixth grade, the seventh grade, the eighth grade. But that's not necessarily the case, right?
It's, no, had everyone signed up by June 30th. Now, but the other, the flip side of that is if you say everyone who wants a bus can have a bus if they pay, you still have to say, but you have to sign up by June 30th.
Of course.
And because I order, have to know how many buses...
Right.
...that we're paying for, and then still, if you come in during the summer, I might be able to, I might have to say to you, you're not going to get a bus.
Right.
So it wouldn't be everyone who's, you know, the policy wouldn't be everyone who pays for a bus gets one, it's everyone who pays for a bus by a certain point would get one.
Right, so I think, right, that makes more sense.
It means that's a different kind of a policy.
That's a different kind of policy, and I think...
But it's, it can't be completely wide open.
Yep.
It's constrained one way or another.
Right, and I do think maybe revisiting the whole after-sixth-grade thing and really emphasizing that for parents. I'd be curious, I asked Superintendent Gorman about this, to survey the parents and find out how many of them actually fell into that category, that fell out of our existing policy into the gray zone of now you, you know what I'm saying? Like, you provided for the two miles up to sixth grade, and then what happens?
Yeah.
Right? How many of those parents didn't get what they thought they might, what they had previously that they weren't eligible for this year? And I just think that's a communication issue on our part that we just really need. And it's interesting, I don't know if it's related to enrollment or not, I don't know if it's just related to people falling asleep in the summer and being too busy.
Yeah.
Everyone does that. Like, we're all scrambling then to figure things out. But I do think it would be helpful, because even at, even at work, there are people I know that I work with that live in the town who are asking me about it, and I was like, about the buses, and I was like, oh, okay, you know, so, and people don't bother me like they bother Sheila. So, I just think that, you know, they don't see me that much, I'm just driving too much. But I do think it would be really important, because I think, I'm curious as to how much of that is a, it has something to do with enrollment, how much of it is a lack of knowledge, and how much of it is we just need to be more clear, you know, about that first-come, first-served by June 30th. That makes more sense to me then. Yeah. Thank you.
I will say that I do get, when I was, yeah, the history of this was our transportation director had to leave at some point mid-cycle here for her own reasons.
Yeah, we appreciate all the work you did, that's for sure.
And so I filled in. So I will say that, you know, just anecdotally, I did get a lot of comments from seventh-grade parents who said, I didn't pay last year, why do I have to pay this year? And I'd say, well, the two miles doesn't apply past sixth grade. So clearly, that isn't as well distributed as information as it could be, because...
If that was just their...
Fair number of people did not know that.
It's all communication that people don't get on, you know... Thank you. They'll accept it if that's what it is, yeah.
Gracias. Thank you so much, Glenn. Sorry.
And then, my final comment is that it seems like unfortunately, from a policy perspective, even that we are well, we are serving our elementary population, so all of this conversation, unless, unless we dramatically change our bus policy, won't necessarily affect what Member White was talking about in terms of the pickup and drop-off at our elementary schools, which is, which is, you know, chaos.
Right.
On a good day.
But one of the points that she made is that with all of the overcrowding on some buses, there are other buses that are full. And so it would be great if it, the Glover School especially, it does have issues especially at pickup time, if more people were on the bus, be a big help.
I will say this is primarily a morning problem.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
As was pointed out at the finance subcommittee meeting yesterday, fully half of elementary school students are in the after-school program.
Correct.
1,025 out of just over 2,000 elementary students participate to some degree in the after-school program. So the, it, this is a morning issue.
It's a morning issue.
At the elementary school especially. And that's where we're looking at, you know, the one bus that we're trying to manipulate will probably be a morning-only change, because the afternoon is not an issue.
Okay.
Thank you. Member Esmer.
Yeah, I have a question about the policy. This was obviously decided long before I came on school committee, but that it goes through sixth grade. And why, if, why does it go through sixth grade rather than just for elementary?
I will yield to our...
You're looking at that.
The Massachusetts general laws require at a minimum that you transport K through six students who live more than two miles from school. So that's the minimum requirement statutorily. The, we used to be more generous than that. We used to, the school committee policy used to transport student, say we would transport any student grades K through six who lived more than one and a half miles from school. So we had a tighter radius. But in around 2003 or 2004, in one of the budgetary cutbacks, we changed it back to the legal minimum of two miles in order to save money on transportation. It saved one, maybe two buses at a time. So that's, that's what it changed last, I'd say about 2003 or 2004, because I was on school committee then.
May I ask one other question?
Well, thank you. Yes, Member Esmer.
So I know that bus fees were reduced when we had our override, and they were reduced by, was it $100 per child? So before that decrease, buses cost us less, and, and I'm just wondering how much of that difference is reduction of fees?
Well, Glenn can answer it, but it doesn't even begin to touch the cost of a bus.
Yeah, 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 as you're saying, the 1,500 a person.
Yeah, and that, I'm sorry, but that, and that difference is made up for in the override funding, so it's, it continues forward, so that...
Right.
We didn't lose that funding, it's captured from our generous taxpayers.
Right, right. Thank you.
Just one final question.
No problem.
So can, can we confirm, when could, can Rachel Shuey, like with your guy, you know, with your approval, can she put together, like, you know, what are, what the, what the district policy is, you know, so that, I'd like people to be able to go on, click on transportation or buses, and there's a link, and you can open up as a PDF and see it, just so that it's, it's there, it's readily, it's easy and accessible.
Well, we can certainly link the policy to...
Yeah.
To that page, that should be...
That'd be great.
All right, well, thank you, Transportation and Traffic. Beginning of school is always a busy time for you guys. Facilities Advisory Committee.
Yes. So the Facilities Advisory Committee just met before this meeting, and number, we went through a number of items on the agenda. One of the items was our facilities study that we're looking to have done. We met with DRA, Drummy Roseanne Anderson, and Carl Franceschi, who is the president of DRA now, a couple of weeks ago. And we have in hand a proposal from DRA for conducting the facilities study that we discussed for a total of $45,000. The committee liked what we saw in terms of the proposal, but we're asking either Dr. Pavlicek or Bill Ritchie, depending on who sees Carl Franceschi first in their travels, to discuss with him what the cost is for each of the outlined services in the proposal. And then, once we have that information, we'll decide whether we want... And then, once we have that information, we'll decide whether we want to continue with each of those items or not. Some of the, the committee felt that some of the items that were outlined may be things that we could do on our own. But, the question is, how much time would it take DRA to do that at their rate? And so, we'll, we'll find out what they have to say and continue that conversation. So, so that's the facilities study. We also discussed the capital budget plan for facilities only. And just, Bill Ritchie presented the items that were in that facilities budget and voted to approve those recommendations. But then it, the budget also needs to go to the Finance Committee to vote their approval before it comes back to the School Committee and goes on to the capital. I don't know why I can't, capital improvement.
Because it's been planning.
Planning Committee, I don't know why I have a mental block for the name of that committee. So, but one of the things that, that, that made, was made clear in, in our conversation about that capital budget for facilities was when we built these schools, we promised that we would maintain them, so that we would be able to keep them up. And we actually got some very positive feedback from DRA, who did our twenty-year facilities management plan, that we're doing a, a great job of maintaining our buildings. And so, that expensive items that might wear out sooner are lasting longer and therefore costing us less money. But, we have to invest in those maintenance costs in order to do that. And so, it's, I think, you know, if, if we don't invest in those ongoing maintenance costs, then it will wind up costing us more money down the road. And that's something that, that is, you know, a very serious financial issue for the town. So, that was the second item. The third was, we discussed the draft facilities goal for the strategic plan, which has been a long time coming. And so, we're, we're almost there. We're going to tweak it just a little bit more, and then we'll have it back to the School Committee, bring it to the School Committee for approval of that. But, the three objectives in that plan that we're working on include one item dealing with our classroom space and our expanding enrollment. Another, being sure that our schools are built for 21st-century education. And our third around being sure that we're maintaining the schools properly. So, those are the three objectives, and we're just revising it a little bit. In particular, adding in an activity around sustainability, which will become part of our, our maintenance goal. And, and Bill Ritchie was able to talk about some of the things that are already being done in our maintenance of the schools that are practices that will be saving energy and the like for the, for the schools. So, so we're working on that. We have, had conversations with Chairman Donahue, attended Selectmen's Meeting last week to discuss with him, with them about, you know, the, the work that we're undertaking with facilities and their keeping apprised of our efforts, as well as the efforts of other groups in town that are looking at building projects down the, down the road. I don't know if Chairman Donahue wants to talk anymore about that.
Well, I would, I would encourage any viewers who routinely tune into our channel and don't turn in, tune into the Town Governmental Channel to do so. It was, it was interesting going to another municipal meeting. The Selectmen were very, Select Board was very gracious, they were very gracious hosts. And the feeling that I came away with from the meeting was, there was definitely a sense of engagement in terms of solving the problem and a commitment to working together to mitigate this, this issue that we're dealing with. So, I was, I was very enthusiastic leaving the meeting.
I have something to add.
Yes.
To that conversation. So, after Kevin went to, Dr. Donahue went to the meeting, there was a presentation, prior to his presentation, about the fire station. And there was conversation about a donation, anonymous donation, to build the fire station. And to put it in a different location than it's currently located. And then, further conversations ensued at the meeting about using, so essentially, the person who's donating the money anonymously would like to move the fire station to the, the section of land that is town-owned, across sort of from the Council on Aging, where the black asphalt is for the basketball court. And, and then there was further conversation on the Select Board's part, not on Dr. Donahue's part, musings about putting an early childhood center over in that section, putting the teen center over there. And they were just musings, but because they occurred on a televised meeting, they raised, they raised a great deal of alarm in my neighborhood. Not because, because my neighborhood has been, I live on Stanton Road, which is around the block from the fire station. And my neighborhood has been very engaged in the process of the fire station and looking at the renderings of the drawings and excited about the new fire station that will someday be there, or the, you know, the revamped fire station. And so, they were caught off guard by the sudden proposition that this donation would occur, that there would be a, that this new fire station would go there, and that all these other things would appear in the neighborhood, without there having been any conversation about it. So, that prompted a neighborhood meeting at a neighbor's house. And then, that prompted a, a meeting on Monday night, this past Monday, at that Council on Aging. And a new neighborhood association has been formed, the Town Center Neighborhood Association. They had many questions from me at the neighborhood meeting about our plans, because they were taken off guard by things that they heard. But, and it was just one thing. And then, they had questions about facilities and about the plans to build on top of Cunningham and all the other, all of those things that we discussed. And, you know, I reminded them that we had the open forums, that I knew they happened in summer. People couldn't come, I encouraged them to join your committee, that you had reached out in the blast, et cetera, and so forth. So, now, there's a new neighborhood association, the TCNA, for another acronym to add to your growing list. And they just feel really, they've, and I will say that Select Board members Zulus and Wells were at the master planning meeting, which was next door, at the Council on Aging. And they came over to the, our meeting. And, you know, there's just a sense that they were just taken aback by things that were said that they had not ever heard before. I assured them that we had no plans currently, and that, and they didn't, some of the members at the meeting didn't even know that we were looking at renting space. Again, and I mentioned to them several times, that Sheila had mentioned that the importance of having our open forums, that Dr. Donahue had had several of them, and that also that the importance of the townwide conversation about need and how each of those things are going to play out one to the other. So, now, there's a new neighborhood association, not to, not to stop process, not to be difficult, but to be part of the conversation that, that, that they were just really, I have to say, taken aback by the idea that their donation was going to happen, that it was going to be happening next week, and that, and that where was all the on-conversation that they had, that they had been listening to for such a long time and were looking forward to? And then, the worry that whatever happens there, what's going to happen to the other building? And then, what does that mean? And those are really valid questions. And we've been, I, I expressed that we have been very thoughtful, as has the Select Board and the Fire Commission. People have been thoughtful in their approaches, but it just really took people by surprise. And I think it's good to be engaged in the process. There were many young parents there. There was only one, only of the group, there was one town meeting member, myself as well, and then Mike. So, I just wanted everyone to be aware that our, our process did come up in this. And I assured everyone that there was no plan to build an early childhood center currently on the table, though that would make me and Ada extremely happy wherever that would go. But, that, that wasn't part of the process right now, and that we really were exploring every avenue, including renting space. And they were happy to hear that. But, it was a surprising thing that occurred as a result of, of a conversation that they just weren't expecting. It was unexpected, as we say in early childhood.
Unexpected. Well, that's, that's wonderful. I'm, I'm glad that they are, they are engaged. And it's, it's another group of stakeholders with which to engage, and I'm, I look forward to it. But, you know, the, the reality is, and if, you know, hopefully, this has gotten the attention of a few additional individuals, we, our, our physical blueprint does not likely have sufficient space for our projected enrollment.
Correct.
So, you know, while we don't, we clearly don't want to, you know, prejudice any discussions that happen in, in the future, or, you know, we are not committing to anything at any point, it is very likely that we will need to find or build additional square footage in town. So, and I, I look forward to that process playing out publicly, you know, with the, as various stakeholders, neighborhood groups, the town meeting, the, the warrant committee, the Selectmen. It will be a lengthy process, and, you know, I'm, I'm confident that townwide, we will come up with a solution. Member Rosemar.
Well, you jogged my memory also of, of something else that happened at this meeting, is we have some, four new parents on our committee who have joined, who are representing each of our four elementary schools. And Chairman Donahue, I'm not sure whether that needs to be approved he, at this point in the agenda, or if you planned on that.
I, I think this is an excellent place to, to add their names to the Advisory Committee officially.
Okay, okay, so, should I share those names then? So, from Tucker School, we have Carrie Hurley. From Colicott School, we have Susannah Hegarty. From Cunningham School, we have Abigail Callahan. And from Glover School, we have Keon Thornton. And we also have, he didn't make this most recent meeting, but will be joining us at our next meeting, is Vice Principal Ben, Ben Kelly will also be joining.
Wonderful. So, I'll move to add those individuals to the Facilities Advisory Committee membership.
Second.
Second by Dr. Craigitt. Any discussion on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah. I, I mean, before we vote on that, I, I guess I wanted to ask, and I, I attended the meeting for a bit. I couldn't speak, so I'm going to, I, I, but I know it was spoken about, about the Pierce and the high school. And maybe putting that in as a second stage, but I left the meeting. So, are you not going to address that at all in this DRA? Like, when they go back to, I mean, when they go back to DRA and ask them, like, because I, again, depending on it, even if you struck some of the bullet, I'm going to just say they're bulleted, even though they're not, but they're bulleted. The, the bulleted pieces and maybe, you know, add that in. And to also, I know that Ben Kelly, I mean, maybe if, if Vice, Vice Principal Ben Kelly's there for the high school. But, I just feel that we shouldn't, since we're doing this now, not to like, oh, we just, we never really addressed the high school or the middle in the process. Whether it would be beneficial to have like a middle school rep on it as well, just, you know, about what the, what's happening there size-wise and all of that. So, I, I didn't know, I mean, we could still vote those people in, but I wanted to ask about what was, what was going to happen or what, what's being addressed with regards to middle and high, since we are diving into this now. So, was that, how did you leave it?
Well, the, the, it, it went around a few times. The, you know, question really, I'm looking for the proposal. The question was really, sort of, what value was each of these items worth? And would we be able to extend this study with that much money to also study the middle and high school? There was a, there was a lot of discussion at this evening's meeting about, is this enrollment bubble? Or, or is it a, an ongoing situation? And certainly, from the NESDEC enrollment projections, this is an ongoing issue that, that we have now five hundred students more than we did when the schools were finished being built. And the projections are for another five hundred. So, the, the numbers keep going up, and the question is, you know, are they going to be continuing into the middle and high school? And how will we address that? So, there was discussion about there being a Phase Two study, looking at middle and high school and focusing really on our short-term, which was originally our plan going into this study, is looking at short-term ways to deal, deal with what's happening at the elementary level right now, because we're, elementary schools are really at a crisis point. But, if there's enough funds available after we've, if we reduce some of the scope of services to extend that look to middle and high school in any meaningful way, I, I think we'd certainly try. I just, just don't know how much we'll be able to be done with that. It depends on how much, at their hourly rate, how much they'd be able to do.
So, it was, it, I think it was a very productive conversation.
Yeah.
And, you know, to your, to your question, I think we'd certainly welcome representation from the middle school or the high school at any point in the process. And, you know, as, as we move forward, I think that's an excellent idea. So, if you, if you or anybody watching has any ideas for an individual who'd be interested, you know, please contact us. And we can, we can add them to the Subcommittee. And, Member Rosemar.
So, so this is my, so my question is, I'm just starting to, I know we've been focusing a lot of our energy on the elementary school, because that's where we're having a, like, if you want to call it, we're calling it like a crisis. Is that the word I'm going to use, I don't know, soon to be? But I'm wondering, when does that play out in the upper grades? And do we, are we starting to see some of that with the bus situation that were occurring? And then, with class size at the high school? And I'm just trying to figure out, like, when does that become something that we needed to pay more, to be a little bit more mindful of going through the task? And maybe, maybe it doesn't, maybe those sorts of things are not, not related to, they're just tangentially or parallel, but they're not actually intersecting, but I don't know that that's the case. Look how quickly it bubbled up on us in terms of, in terms of the elementary school from that, from the first time that they came. To all of a sudden, many, many, I mean, and then, what does that look like in upper grades? I don't know. But, I don't think it's something we can necessarily just, I don't know. I think it needs to be in that part of the conversation somewhere, but.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I agree.
I don't know.
I think the whole committee would agree, yeah.
So, I, I agree with you. My little packet, so from NESDEC last year, our projected peak of K to five, projected academic year twenty-three, twenty-four. Projected peak in middle school, academic year twenty-five, twenty-six. Projected year is the final year they give us for the high school, which is academic year twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Right.
So, your, your point is an excellent one, and it's one that we've talked about a lot. This is definitely a bulge.
Right.
But it's, and, and there's, there's a crest to that bulge. But then, the drop-off after that crest is not the status quo ante. The new status quo is, is, is a minimal drop-off from that crest. But, it's still dramatic, so.
I'm just wondering, because some of the trends that we have sort of looked at but not looked at is the fact that people not leaving the high school as much and/or end returning to the high school. That's the piece that I don't have a good grasp of as a School Committee member. And we've tried to discuss that at Finance a little bit. But, the actual number that come back and how much that affects the overall enrollment, it may be negligible, because the high school's large enough to, or not, I don't know, so.
Yeah. Member Rosemar.
So, yeah, and so, since we're on this, the topic again, I did ask, after I had gone to my open house, I asked Glenn and.
to my open house, I asked Glenn and Ms. Gormly if, once the dust settled by the end of this month, and by mid-October, so I, I, maybe I, at the 17th school committee meeting, I would like, I would like, and I want to request it now, from middle, from middle to high, from sixth, from the sixth grade through 12, how many classes have 28 to 38, to 30 kids in them? Because I saw a lot of that, as did other people I know in town who sort of texted me after open house night at the high school, that there's, there's high, high numbers there, and we need to be mindful of that, about, you know, we have a great high school and, you know, real good middle school, but, you know, many of you are teachers here, and everyone always says, you know, even the best teacher, what they are at, you know, 23 is not what they are at 30 or 31. And I just, I want us to pay attention to, yeah, to the class size, and to, and to see, you know, enrollment-wise, because there are so many people that come back, you know, in both middle and in high. Because I'm in the thick of it with my kids, and I saw it over the past three years really increase. So, so this report, I, you know, I'm just wondering, I know it's that, but I do think there, there's this trend of people coming back, and I just want us to watch it, make sure that we're not having every class at this high school at 20 or 30 kids. You know what I mean? I'm not saying it would, but, you know, how many are, you know, majority was.
Right. Well, I know, in, in looking at the elementary school class sizes, it was really notable, I did an analysis of, you know, every class size in every grade at all four schools, and it, it really spoke to the dedication that district staff has had to balancing class size across town, so that you don't have a class of 15 on one side of town, and a class of 30 on the other, that, that, that it's both staff's encouragement with parents that are coming, families as they're coming in of like, well, the class size there is really kind of maxed out, you know, let me introduce you to these other possibilities for schools. And, and families are agreeing that that's a desirable thing. So, yeah, I think that looking at class sizes is worthwhile exercise.
Just to say, just so we, it's on the radar, and it doesn't, like to Margaret's point, that it just doesn't get the best of us that all of a sudden, like, you know, it happened and we weren't aware.
Right, right. So, yeah, I, I just, I guess the only thing I don't know is, is if we wanted to extend this, and Glenn, you may have more experience with it, we certainly have more experience with this than I do, of if we were to extend this, the scope of this DRA study, facility study, to incorporate middle and high school to the same degree that we're looking at elementary, would it cost a lot more? I mean, I guess it's just, you know, I just don't know.
That's fine.
You know, it's certainly a question we can ask.
Dr. Pavlich. Just to say that the scope of the study will, to a certain extent, incorporate some information about Pierce to begin with and so forth, because if one of the options that was floated on the table was, for instance, moving a fifth grade up to Pierce, you can't even talk about that without analyzing the situation at Pierce, and what collateral implications that would have for high school size and so forth. So there's going to be a certain amount of, of looking at the middle school, high school in it of necessity.
Even though it's not stated.
Even though, but it, it won't be the full extent that you're probably looking at here, in saying in eight years, what is the high school going to look like? I don't think that's, you, you would see that coming out of this, but I don't think that the, the DRA study as proposed would ignore issues at the middle school in particular, because I don't think it possibly could, and actually look at all the topics we're looking at.
Yeah, and what we talked about was having like Phase One study, which would be this, and then Phase Two that would look at the middle and high school, you know, shortly after we're done with this. I think, I think we're all recognizing that, but, no, I also, I like that suggestion of having, adding somebody from, from Pierce, and it could be a staff member or, or a parent. So, I think that's it.
We need to vote, we need to say yes.
Oh, yeah, 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 and the members, thank you.
So, so let's, so again, for those, thank you, I'm keeping track at home in here, we're going to add these, these four individuals to the advisory committee. Five. Five, that's right, because Vice Principal Kelly. We're going to add these five individuals to the advisory committee, and there's been motion and second, so all in favor? All right, that's unanimous, thank you. All right, let's see, facilities, now we're on to policy.
Great, so Sheila and I had a very brief meeting this evening to sort of think about the year. Everyone was busy with facilities, and our other superintendents were attending a conference. So we're just sort of thinking about, well, we're going to look at the transportation policy, just so we have a better understanding for ourselves. I, I couldn't find it, I spent a, a good deal of time last night looking through our policy manual online, and I just couldn't find it, so I'm sure it's there, but I just couldn't find it. And so I'd like to have a look at that and just be, be more, have a better understanding. I'd like to look at some of the fundraising policies that we have on file, student fundraising, there's a couple in there. I don't know how old they are, if they're even relevant anymore, but we, we've had some questions arise to us as members about fundraising at the high school for sports, and about other things that occur in town, fun runs and all of those things, and I just want to have a better understanding of how or if our policies intersect with any of those efforts. I would like, and then there's a couple about gifts and grants for public schools and public, public solicitations on school, in the schools. And then there was actually one called Philosophy of Athletics that I found, was also very interesting, so I was going to discuss that with Dr. Pavlich and see if it's even something that, it was an interesting policy. I would, I did look at the policy manual I assigned online, and I, I think it's probably worth us considering having some help for Charlene, whether we could find some financial help, pay someone to sort of work on really getting that manual in good shape for, for us as a, as a district. She's done more, I mean, she's online, I mean, it's just, it's a tremendous amount of work, and she already has a tremendous amount of work to do, as does everyone else, and I think it needs a different kind of time, like just dedicated time to sort of look at it, and then look, try and figure out what do we want to look at. Dr. Donahue had given us a couple more policies that we are going to look at as well, and so I just, I really, there's so many that are really old in there, some of them, again, still the evaluation one is not correct, the superintendent one, we need to update that one. There's just a few things that really need to, we just need to look at the manual, and it's one of those things that, that's important, but not as important as like figuring out what we're going to do with the buses, and what are we going to do about the kids that don't have any classrooms, and what are we going to do about all the other things, but I really think if we just could, maybe we can think about it. I don't know how much it would cost, I don't know if they're, I'm sure there's an intern we could get or something, but I don't know. I just feel, feel like we could help Charlene sort of just finalize that piece, it would be nice for this committee as well. I know Dr. Pavlich spent a lot of time on it as well. It's, it's a never-ending issue.
Charlene, you're exactly right, it's a question of time. I mean, Charlene has a version of it with, you know, where they're all in one place, and where you have a live table of contents to jump you to the right page. It's just a lot of work putting all those things together.
It is.
And frankly, she has a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I agree.
Supersedes it most of the time. But you're right, if we had, you know, it wouldn't take someone too many hours.
Right.
To put it into a, you know, a linked PDF document that you could easily put up with, you know, a table of contents and jump to the right pages, and it's not new technology, it just takes some time.
Right.
And, you know, and that's one of the things, you know.
Right.
Our administrative support is thin.
It's thin, no, it's really thin. Do you think we could get like a, I know we did, but even like a grant, like for just a brief amount of time, you know, like for someone to come in to do it, or, you know, like you say, it just, it's just time, and once they know how to do it, I mean, but at the same time, as a district, it's, it's good to have your policies, I don't think any district, because they change, you know, but, you know, still up to date and not too archaic, you know, because if someone wants to say what the policy is, says, well, this is what it is, and you don't want to say, well, that's actually not what it is, and da-da-da-da. So I don't know if there's something we can do with that, I don't know.
Maybe we can think about it in finance or something. Yeah, let's do that, yeah.
Okay.
And if there's any policy that any of you, like, I know you just have, like, you know, tons of time to go through the manual, and, you know, at your leisure on a Saturday afternoon, but if there's anything that you, like, that you think about.
Like an issue, and then we can look.
Yeah, an issue, like, like, as I said, Dr. Donahue gave us a good couple here to think about and to look at, and, you know, he started this when he was the chair of school, I mean, of the policy committee, to really start moving that, the policy manual forward, and I think, I think as a group, we've really done a great job of that. There's a lot of really solid policies that, if you look at recently done policies, we've done a lot of solid work around good policy, but I'd like to think that there's some more that we could just sort of shape up for the future.
Agreed.
So that's where we are.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, approval of minutes.
Wow, a lot of minutes.
So yes, we do have a few minutes. So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to make a small amendment to these minutes, I'm going to add the header of individuals present at the meeting of the 18th and the, July 18th and August 13th. All of us as school committee members were present, and I believe all of the administrators, Superintendent Gormly, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, and Dr. Pavlich were present there as well. So I'm going to add those as amendments to the top, but otherwise, I do not have substantive changes. If anyone has a substantive change, I'll give you a few minutes to refresh your memory.
Excuse me.
And so I'm going to make an omnibus motion for approval of the July 17, July 18, and August 13 minutes of the Milton School Committee as amended.
Second.
Second, Varela, thank you very much. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. I'd like to thank our administrative team for putting these together while our recording secretary position is, is transitioning. It is a, it's a very difficult thing to do, and especially remain in compliance with the state's laws requiring approval of minutes, which I'm happy to say we do by approving these today. Old business.
Can I just say on that, we have a, as of this afternoon, we now have a school committee clerk.
Yeah, yeah.
She came in and filed her paperwork with us today, she will be present at the next school committee meeting.
Wonderful.
We will once again have a clerk for the school committee.
Excellent.
Welcome. We'll give you her resume and give you a little background on her.
That's our next meeting.
You may have already received an email, but we'll introduce her at our next meeting.
Good, excellent. Thank you. All right, old business, we have none, citizen speak top, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Member, Member Wright or Member Rosemary?
Yeah, I, just looking at the, the minutes for the, the public forum that we had, jog my memory about that, that when we do such fora in the future, it would be, I think it would be good for us to ask people to sign in, so that we get the names of the people who are there, because I, after those forums, I thought, gosh, I wish I knew what that woman's name was, who told me this or that, and, yeah.
Yeah, I sent a name and email, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, somebody who came out for that is clearly interested, and they're gone.
Thank you. And, and to the viewing public and, and reporting public who may be watching this, if, if, in the translates, if anybody went to one of those fora and wants to provide us, remind us of your name with email address, we would love to have it.
Yeah, thank you.
So, thank you, that's an excellent point.
I was wondering if we had an update on the Wilson School?
So they are just waiting for the final approval from the certificate of occupancy from the town, what is the gentleman's name, sorry?
Building inspector?
Yeah, the building inspector, I can't think of his name.
Mr. Prondt.
Right, and that's it, and everything else has been actually, all their other permits are on working order, and that was the la, is the last one, so, you know, that, that is a, that is a landlord church, like, that's not something like that the school, that the person that has the school can do. Like, when you're renting the space from someone, they need to follow through on all those things, and they have been, the church has been doing a great job. And I think it's just that last piece, which is always the hardest piece, when you're opening a space, and they have to check every little box for the safety. But everything else is in great order, and I don't know that, I don't think, I think that I said that, that the 17th meeting, not the third.
Okay.
Because I wasn't even thinking that, that we had a third, and I know that we have the calendar, but it wasn't even in my mind.
I think because we had so much about the 17th with the library thing.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, I could reach out to her, but I think, I think the 17th would give the town enough time to give her the occupancy, and then they'll be good to roll.
Okay.
Good.
I mean, yeah, I could include you in all the emails, I just try not to, I usually include someone like these two.
Member Varela. And I know that it says next meet, so again, I just want to double check, so, because with everything, but we are on for the third, and then we have the 17th, and those are our next two meetings after this, right? I just want to confirm that. And I do have something, not for the, the third, but I do want to put it out there now because it's our last meeting, as my former little, I'm going to put my former little theater hat on, but it's the last meeting we have before the grand opening of Les Mis at Milton High School, and I've been hearing through the grapevine of parents that it's going to be unbelievable, and big turnout, big cast, and I'd like to have them come sing one song for us and just promote it.
What meeting is this?
The 17th.
Oh, we're going to be here anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're going to be here anyway, it's the ninth we're there, so I just think it would be good to give them a chance to.
I heard some rehearsals, and it was, it took all of my willpower not to open.
I've got crack, yeah, it took away, yeah, 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 so.
Good, all right, we'll have that to look forward to on the 17th as well. All right, no executive session, so I'm going to move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Varela, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much, we are adjourned for the meeting.